Going to go ahead and call this December 1st, 2025, meeting of the Whitefish City Council to order. Thanks, everyone, for attending. We also have some folks attending remotely via Zoom, so I appreciate your attendance tonight to participate in your government. We'll start with our Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask my friend Matt Boyer to please lead us.
I have the Pledge of Allegiance to the high of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks very much, Matt. We do have a presentation this evening from Habitat for Humanity, and I will ask that representative to please join us. Thank you.
Thank you for having us this evening. My name's Mary Beth Moran, and I'm the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity at Flathead Valley, and I'm joined by my construction manager colleague, Garrett Robertson. And so I just want to give you a little bit of background to start with. I don't...I'll start talking anyhow, and I'm sure it'll be fine in a second.
That would be fine. We have your full presentation in our packet.
Okay, that's great.
Thank you.
So Habitat for Humanity at Flathead Valley has been here since 1989, and in that time, we've built 73 homes in the Flathead. And recently, we sold two homes in 2023, and then three in 2024, and four 2025, as we're closing in on it. And then we have four houses under construction right now. They're about 50% done. Fortunately, they're dried in for winter, and we will break ground on six more in the spring of 2026. So by the end of 2026, we will have sold 10 homes in that year because they kind of span years. It's a little tricky to do the math on how many per year. But as it stands, we're probably doing about five to eight houses a year, and I'll talk a little bit more about how we're increasing our capacity. As a reminder, or maybe many of you don't need the reminder, we also operate a Restor in South Kalispell. And is, in addition to being a great place for volunteers to be and to find great furniture and appliances and building materials, we're recycling everything there. You know, about 4,000 truckloads come into the Restor and don't go to the dump, which is great. And I think it's wonderful for people who, you know, if their refrigerator breaks and they don't have $1,000 or $1,200 to go buy a new refrigerator, they can come to the Restor and buy one for 125 bucks. So that's another thing that we do. And I'm just going to kind of click through and show you where our houses are, where those 73 homes are. So if we start with the south of the valley, we've got five down in Lakeside, kind of concentrated in a neighborhood there. Then we've got five more down in Summers on School Edition Road. We always like to build really close to parks and schools. And then we've got, I think, 28 in Kalispell. We just closed this June on townhouses on the corner of 9th Avenue West and 7th Street West, if you want to see for yourself what our townhouses look like currently. We got 29 in Columbia Falls. Last Friday, or the Friday before, we closed on a three-bed, single-family residence right across the street from that pickleball park, like 3rd Avenue East North. And that's also right behind the town pump there. We have the four townhouses that are under construction. So they're just in that block right behind town pump, that Exxon Town Pump. And then we'll...the city of Columbia Falls gave us what used to be a park, but it wasn't used that much. So that's where we'll put six single-family homes and a park, starting this spring. And then in Whitefish, we have six, and it's been a while since we've built up here. So there's some over on Texas, there's one on Edgewood, and then there's one over on Second Street, and then one down in Happy Valley. And honestly, if you asked me to find that one in Happy Valley, I'd have a hard time finding it. It's been a while since we built that. So that's what we've been building. And then, in addition to that, we've also bought some land recently, and I'll talk a little bit more about that at the end of the presentation. But a lot of people ask me, how does this work? And some people are under the assumption that it's low-income housing, or that we give houses away. We serve 30% to 80% of their area median income, and you can see that that's actually maybe a little bit more than you'd think right now. I think this is really dipping into the middle class. For example, I looked at the 2025 Bureau of Labor Statistics salaries, average salaries for a Flathead County, and right now, like, healthcare support jobs are 38,000, farming, fishing, forestry, 43.5,000, office admin, 43.6,000 per year, police and fire, 56,500 per year, education, library, 56.9, and construction, 58,900. So, you know, if it's a one-person household, a lot of those people would qualify to apply for our homes. If it's a two-person, one-income household, or if it's a four-person household with two kids or three kids, you know, there's a lot of people who are eligible for Habitat for Humanity homes. And so that's the first parameter. The second one is they have to have a good credit score. On staff, we have a qualified mortgage loan originator, and it's the same process. If you went to a bank, you have to show two years of tax returns, have to prove consistent employment, you have to prove your credit score. And then everyone who builds a house with Habitat for Humanity has to do something called sweat equity, where they work on their own house. And they have to do that for a day a week. So they have to be committed to doing that and able to do it, and that's for a minimum of 275 hours before the house closes. So as soon as they sign that partnership agreement with us, till the day the house goes to closing, they are out there once a week. And if they're not working on their house, they're working on someone else's house. But that's our sweat equity requirement. And there are a lot of advantages to that. I mean, we have a huge volunteer staff, and like, for example, those four townhouses that we're building in Columbia Falls, those four households are building each other's houses. So we really create a lot of community, and neighbors come out and get to know the homeowners, and I think it's one of the nicest things about our model. Also, to be eligible, the applicants have to demonstrate a need for better housing. They have to...usually, they show us pictures that it's an unsafe structure, that they're rent burdened, so their rent is more than 30% of their monthly income, or that there's some sort of contractual insecurity, such as not having a lease, or kind of living in their mom's boss's rental, or their boss's rental, and stuff like that, which we think is kind of insecure. So that's what makes people eligible for Habitat for Humanity home. And then this is how we go about the process. We announce when applications open. There's usually a press release. It's on our website. We contact all of our partners, like the Land Trust, Housing Whitefish, Whitefish Housing Authority. We let everyone know that we're accepting applications. We leave them open for about 45 days on average, and then people get their paperwork in, and that gives us enough time to say, okay, you're missing something, et cetera, et cetera. But if they meet those thresholds that I just showed you, then we invite them in for an interview, and that's when we start to rank, like, their vulnerability, their viability for the sweat equity, the viability to financially complete. So we sell our houses. People get mortgages, and I'll talk a little bit more about this in the next slide or so, but people get 30-year, 2% mortgages through the Montana Board of Housing for Habitat for Humanity homes. And we want to make sure that people are going to be okay and make the mortgage payment, that they're viable, too. So we ask about contingency plans, what would they do if they lost their job, and things like that, so that we can make sure that we don't have any default with our homes. Then we have a...it goes...everything goes blind to the selection committee, no names, no identifying information, and that goes in a matrix. And then our selection committee, which is a mix of our board and our staff, select. And then our Board of Directors ratifies that selection. And then the partnership agreement is signed, and the homeowners commit to the sweat equity. And Glacier Bank does our loan underwriting, so we get them prepared for underwriting. And we also have a one-year mentorship program, which is super important, because for a lot of Habitat homeowners, it's not just that it's the first time they've owned a home, but it's often the first time anyone in their family's owned a home. So it takes a lot of coaching on how to take care of that asset, and, you know, like, how to change your furnace filter, you know, why it matters to have a nice lawn, how that affects your neighbors, teaching them how to, you know, participate in a really positive way in their community. And then there's a lot of financial planning in our mentorship program, too. So budgeting and, you know, the expenses that come with homeownership that you may not know about if you've been renting your whole life, and your parents rented, too. So we do a lot of coaching that way because we really want people to succeed. Then, this is how the financing works. So people always say, well, you know, how do you set your prices? Well, Habitat for Humanity has a policy nationwide that we set the price at the appraised value, unless there's a programmatic reason for doing otherwise. So, for example, the last three houses that we've closed on have been in partnership with the Northwest Montana Community Land Trust. And we wanted those houses to be as inexpensive as possible because the Land Trust has first right of refusal to buy them back when those homeowners want to move out. So...and we have a...we cap the equity exactly the same way the Northwest Montana Community Land Trust does, where they only make 25% of the appreciation. So, for example, if we sold a house to someone for $300,000 this year, and in 10 years, that house appraises for $400,000, when that family gets too big for the house, or they get a job offer in Spokane or whatever, then that family can only keep 25% of the equity. So they can only take 25,000 out. They can't take the whole $100,000 of appreciation. And that's exactly the same formula that the Land Trust uses, because we want the Land Trust to buy all of our houses. This year, the Habitat for Humanity of Flathead Valley Board of Directors ceded the first right of refusal on all of the houses we build to the Northwest Montana Community Land Trust. We want nothing more than for those houses to go in the Land Trust, and we want them to be affordable for the Land Trust to buy. And the lower that price is when they buy it, then it just keeps staying that much undermarket, undermarket, with each resale, each resale. So we take that partnership very seriously, and we've done everything we can to strengthen it. But as I said, the first mortgage, like, on that $300,000 house, and by the way, those two townhouses and that, what I think is a beautiful, single-family home that we just closed on across the street from the pickleball courts in Columbia Falls, each one of those units, because they were built on Land Trust land, closed for under $320,000. So I think we're talking about truly affordable housing now. But moreover, those homeowners only have to pay 2% interest on 30-year notes. And again, but there's kind of a ceiling on that through the Montana Board of Housing. They don't want the homeowners to become mortgage burden, just like we don't want people to be rent burdened, too. So sometimes there's a second mortgage that kind of fills the gap between what Montana Board of Housing will fund, and then the cost for us to have built the house. And so we either carry that or Neighbor Works Montana, who we are working very closely with, will loan up to, like, 65,000 for that second mortgage, and it's basically 0%, and it's no payment until 30 years or a triggering event where the house goes up for sale or something. So it's a pretty good deal for homeowners. Moreover, our homeowners don't have to pay a down payment, and I think this is one of the biggest hurdles to homeownership nowadays. It's not just that, you know, the price of the houses is so high, there's so little stock under $500,000 or anything that's affordable, but it's really hard for people to save up for that down payment, especially if they want to give a big enough down payment so that they don't have to pay mortgage insurance, you know, because sometimes with these high rates, and then if they have to pay for mortgage insurance on top of that, they just kind of fall off the cliff of affordability. It just is like 200, 300, $200 per month, too much for them to make it. So it's a big deal that they're not paying down payment on Habitat homes. They only have to pay 1% of the value of the house toward the closing costs. As I said before, we want everything to go in the Land Trust. We're pretty tightly deed-restricted. It's owner-occupied only. You can't run a business out of the house unless it's like 10% of the square footage of the house, so...but you can't, like, use your whole living room for a bakery or something. Yeah, first right of refusal to the Land Trust, and then the appreciation cap that I just described to you. So, how many houses can we build? Well, as you see, we've been gaining ground. We're five to eight houses a year, and so that'll actually be 10 by the end of the year in 2026. And that's with three full-time construction staff members. On top of that, we have, on average, about 10,000 hours a year for volunteers, only for construction, not the Restor or anything else. And that's our superpower. I mean, we've written a grant to the Murdoch Foundation. We hope to have one more construction, full-time equivalency by the middle of 2026, and that will make a big difference. But it's the volunteers who are kind of the secret weapon, and we're always trying to get more people volunteering with us. And we have some regulars who come out and they make a big difference. We build Wednesdays, Fridays, and Saturdays. So we're building all these houses on three days a week, really. We did do something two years ago that made a big difference. We put six RV hookups behind our Restor. And now we have these people who drive all over the nation, from one Habitat build site to the next. They're called caravanners. And at their own expense, they take their RVs, and they're mostly retired, and they just can come and stay for free behind our Restor now. And they stay at least two weeks. Some stay till the snow flies. And they've really given us a lot more capacity. And they're experienced builders. They've gone to other habitats, so they know a lot about best practices on our build sites. They're pretty great. So that's helped a lot. We also, this past year, installed a pre-framing shop in the back half of our Restor, kind of quarter of it. So we're pre-framing all of our houses now. We've got a big framing table and industrial saws, and every house has been templated, and we have cut sheets for everything. And so even, you know, if it's 20 below, we're indoors framing. And now, I don't know, like, the house that we just finished in Columbia Falls, I think that was, like, framed in February?
Yes.
Yeah, and it just goes on a trailer. And so that saves us a lot of time, and it's a great way to engage volunteers, too, who don't want to be out on the site. So we have a pipeline. We just had a five-year strategic planning session with the Board of Directors, and we're committed to a pipeline of 40 houses by the end of the year of 2030. And it's a realistic pipeline. I think we all agree. Our biggest hurdle in building more is land. We've got the capacity, and we can do it, but we need land. And if you have heard a rumor that we've bought a piece of land, it is true. We did buy 21-plus acres along the alternate in Kalispell, just south of Four Mile Road. It's a neighborhood that we're going to call Birchwood. We won't be able to get vertical on that, though, because we've got to put all the infrastructure in and do all the planning on it. So we won't be able to get vertical on that until probably the end of '27, beginning of '28. That will be a mixed-income neighborhood. We are partnering with two private-sector builders, and we'd like to do more of this, so that we can reach homeowners between 80% and 200% in our neighborhoods, too. Plus, I just think it's socioeconomically a lot healthier to have mixed-income neighborhoods. So we've started...we've created a new model to be able to partner with private-sector builders and find a lot of synergies with that. But actually, I'm going to turn it over to Garrett now to talk a little bit about the quality of our houses.
Sure. Hi there. I'm Garrett. I'm the construction manager for Habitat. I've been with Habitat for five years now. And yeah, so like, on this slide here, one of the things that we started doing about a year and a half ago is...or a year...how long ago? A year ago? About a year ago, is pre-framing the walls in our shop. I think one of the cool things about our organization is that we, you know, we do what's best for our volunteers. We do...everything that we do is typically just what's best for everyone. So that's like how we build, what we build, where we build, all that, every detail. And this was a big thing for us because we were losing a lot of manpower in the winter. Honestly, most of our volunteers don't like when we cancel build days because they really enjoy coming out and building with us. They like the camaraderie. So all of our homes now are built with these pre-framed walls, and there's not a lot different about this than building on the site, other than the quality control is actually a little bit better. We're able to not miss as many nails and all that good stuff because we can see it under a nice, bright light. And the instructional piece is actually a lot easier, too. Building with volunteers isn't always the easiest thing. It's not always the hardest, either. It's actually a lot of fun, but being able to do it in the shop actually makes that piece a lot easier because you're able to, you know, everybody's in one big room as opposed to maybe multiple buildings when you're out on the site, and then maybe jump to the next one there. So, you know, a big thing about our homes that I'm actually really passionate about, and that's one of the things...I am actually very passionate about the way we build. We do not build the most affordable homes possible, and that's really important to me because it is very possible to build homes that aren't great, and they're just sort of slapped together. Our homes are extremely energy-efficient. We started building with ICF about two years ago, so our stem walls, our concrete stem walls are...have R20 insulation on them, R10 on both sides, so they're double-insulated. We put insulation under our slabs. We pretty much always build slab-on-grade. And it all just is well above code, but we really just want our homes to be sustainable for our homeowners, and also sustainable for longevity. I think the way we build makes them last a lot longer as well. Slab-on-grade, for instance, I mean, it's not very common around here. We do it because, you know, it's relatively maintenance-free for our homeowners, and we're not just kind of looking at the cost of getting them in the house. We're looking at everything, and so we want to look at long-term costs as well. Let's see. Yeah, and so we actually...this brings up a point. You know, our air handling systems are really efficient. We always use ductless heat pumps and HRVs to make sure that we're recapturing all of the hot air that's leaving the house, bringing in fresh air. We build our homes really airtight, typically to the point where we have to use an HRV to bring in the fresh air, because otherwise, they wouldn't have enough. And that really helps with the efficiency. We always do blower door tests. I mean, that's required, but we always do that. And, you know, we've been partnering a lot with our vendors and our subcontractors to help make...bring those costs down as well. And so, yeah, that's just, you know, a house we just closed on in Columbia Falls. We, you know, some of the things that we do are not as common for Habitat, and it's because we're all volunteer, and we can actually, you know, do some things that are a little bit nicer. That would maybe be more expensive to do with subcontractors because we have volunteers that come in and do that for us. Let's see what's on the next one there. Okay, so that's the townhomes that we built in Columbia Falls. And, you know, a good example of that is we build...sorry, we design all of our homes in-house predominantly. We do this for a lot of reasons: energy efficiency. We do it because we know what our volunteers are going to be able to build efficiently, and, you know, what an architect gives us isn't always...that's not always the case. But also, I mean, things just like putting the garages together here, you know, that's purposefully done to make it easier to build, but also just for privacy and that type of thing. So...and yep, that's the inside of that house. We started doing granite countertops last year. That was a cool thing. Got a discount on those.
So we're...we have a good fortune on Garrett's team to have someone who is an AmeriCorps volunteer for us, right as she was getting out of Cal Poly Architecture School, and now she's a full-time member of Garrett's team. So we're allowed...we can design a lot more in-house, and we've, you know, we're playing with, like, small...smaller houses. We're in this Birchwood property that I told you about that we're planning to get 97 units on. We'll probably build something that looks like this. We're quite inspired by the Bridger View project in Bozeman. And so we'll probably try and do a little bit of, like, the alley-fed homes, where we get about five of those across, if not four, so that we can get density, but also have a mixed-income neighborhood, because we're working with two private-sector builders who will be building different products. And actually, one of the private-sector builders we chose to build with is because they build something that looks a lot like that single-family home that we showed you with the blue door, so that people don't ever go by and go, oh, that's a Habitat house, not a Habitat house. We really...everything we do, I think we think about the dignity of the people who volunteer with us, the people who live in our houses, the people we work with. It's just...it's a wonderful model, I mean, and the generosity of the community in terms of people who donate concrete or granite countertops or deep discounts. I think it's my favorite part of it. It just brings people from all different sectors of our society and our economy together to work on something together, and, you know, that's one of the best parts of it by far.
Thanks, Mary Beth.
Thank you.
Thanks, Garrett. Appreciate your time tonight.
(applause)
Thanks for all that you do. In the spirit of time, I'm going to go ahead and bump our proclamation to the end of the meeting for those that are here for other agenda items. So we'll move on to communications from the public. We don't have any public hearings scheduled for tonight, so if you're here to speak to the council on any other item, now would be your opportunity. And name and address for the record, please. Any public comment this evening. Zee?
Okay. For the record, Zee 418 East Second Street. I am here yet again to urge all members of City Council to demonstrate moral courage and schedule a public hearing to discuss designating the pride flag as the official flag of the city of Whitefish. Numerous studies confirm that welcoming and supportive communities significantly reduce the risk of suicide among LGBTQIA+ people. The Whitefish School
The Whitefish School District Board of Trustees is precluded by law to proceed with adopting a policy that would assist school personnel in providing a safe and welcoming learning environment for these vulnerable students until you act. With the exception of Rebecca, the silence of the members of council has been deafening. Frank, while I appreciate your acknowledgement of the repugnant racist name of your road, please note that there are more queer residents of Whitefish than black. Steve, your concern about the leaf collection schedule in your neighborhood is not quite the quality-of-life issue I would hope you, as an educator, would deem worthy of addressing. In closing, I want each of you to take a long, hard look in the mirror and ask yourself, do I stand with the Evangicals in Helena, or do I stand on the side of liberty and justice for all? Thank you.
Further communications from the public. Cameron.
Cameron Blake, 825 Lexington Trail, Whitefish. As we all know, we need affordable community workforce, ownership housing in this community. Spent the afternoon at a housing committee meeting and, you know, looked a lot at the housing needs assessment. We need 47 units between 50 and 80% AMI in the next 10 years. I started volunteering for Habitat this summer, been helping out with grant writing and such, and just, you know, became apparent that they're part of, potentially part of this solution. And I really encourage us to try to find them some land to build on. Their capacity building, just what they've been able to do, capacity building, high-functioning in the office, you know, everything about the organization is very professional and I can't say enough good things about them. As you saw, the buyer selection process, the financing is super nuanced, and, you know, looking at the across-the-board solutions, it really takes an organization, whether it be Habitat or someone else, that understands what's out there and can educate potential buyers and provide, provide and find the financing solutions for them to be able to afford the housing. So I guess it, in conclusion, it takes builders who understand this segment of the market, and whatever direction you go, encouraged to look at RFP process, you know, Habitat could apply. But let's get builders in here to build affordable housing who have a track record and have done it, can get something done, and get these city lots built upon and some housing to help people out. Thank you.
Thanks, Cameron. Further communications.
Hello, I'm Jamie Gogan, 117 Washington Avenue. Just to lighten the mood a little bit, first of all, I would like to concur with Cameron, and I, too, am a big Habitat fan. I think I love anyone who's got a working solution and then is applying it and then actually making homes happen for people. It's so rad, and Mary Beth is awesome. And so I just would like to say welcome you to Whitefish. Okay, so just to change the subject a little bit, I'd like to illustrate a little story about Whitefish. I'm inspired by winter communities, and I'm just going to read a very short letter. Imagine a town where we don't have to hide from winter and we celebrate it. We do that very well in this town, but I'd like to see more. Speaking of suicide and depression and loneliness, where our public spaces don't shut down for six months but transform into something magical. Picture Depot Park on a cold winter night. Snow is coming down softly, the sky is crystal, and the community gathers bundle and blankets, puffy coats, hand warmers, hot cocoa, to watch a winter cinema under the stars. Kids are running around, neighbors are catching up, people sharing soup and stories. It's simple, it's low-cost, and it's incredibly high in value. Now picture City Beach. Many of us know and love Gabriel, the man who, out of pure love for this town, volunteers hours smoothing the ice and building a rink and then DJing for whomever shows up. It's Thursday, Friday, and Saturday this winter, everyone. So he provides disco skate on the lake, music echoing over the frozen shoreline, smiles on the coldest nights. That's what community-powered joy looks like. And if the lake freezes deeply enough and safely enough, which it often does, imagine extending that magic with an ice ribbon connecting, say, City Beach all the way to the lodge. And I don't see why we wouldn't do this right along the shoreline where it's nice and safe. The equipment needed for something like this wouldn't be a multi-thousands-of-dollar Zamboni. It could be the equipment that we have currently in our sheds that take care of the city, and you can apply PVC pipe and drill holes for water along the way. It's very simple, and we're very ingenuative in this town, so I think it could happen. Imagine families, teens, seniors, everyone moving, meeting, talking, laughing along a winter path. It's winter placemaking, designing joy into the season, creating warmth in cold months, building connection when we need it the most. A winter Whitefish where we gather, we move, we celebrate, and where community isn't just a word, it's something that we actually feel. Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Additional public comments this evening? Nathan.
Thank you, Nathan Dugan, 937, Kalispell Avenue. Just want to briefly touch, I guess, on all the fun interviews that you guys are doing today and the appointments that you'll be making later. I think we have a good opportunity here that doesn't really present itself all of that much through these appointments, but a lot of qualified and engaged people have applied that kind of represent a large demographic spectrum. And so you guys have an opportunity really potentially to match the demographics of the planning commission to that of the town. I think it's been no secret, really, that there's been a little bit of consternation lately with the planning commission. And demographics aren't all of that, but it may be some of that. Whitefish is about 50/50 male/female, with about 59% of residents in Whitefish, based on the latest data, being ages 18 to 64, and only 23% being 65 or older. Whether or not you think that's important, I think it's important, and I think that the planning commission is important. And even though they're going to be done with the land use plan, that's kind of an iterative process that will continue to take place every five years, if not more frequently than that, looking out 20 years in the future. And I think having demographics on that commission that more closely mirror the demographics of the town provides the best opportunity for getting that right when we're looking well into the future. I think that, myself included at times, but a lot of young people I know, I think, feel unsupported, they feel unheard, at times feel unwanted. And that starts kind of with the decisions that are made up here. The words are one thing, but it's the decisions that we see over time that has led quite a few people that I know to really just give up on this place and go to somewhere where they can afford a place to live and aren't gaslit and made to feel crazy when they come in with a different opinion, where they can build a life. Those people aren't coming back in the future, ever. And so I think we should think about that as well when we're just thinking about the longevity of Whitefish in general and who's going to be sitting in your seats in 30 years or 40 years if we're not creating opportunity for people to establish a life here in their 20s and 30s. Thanks.
Thanks, Nathan. Further public comment this evening? Any volunteer board reports from the audience? Before I get to, Michelle, anyone online wishing to provide comments? We'll move on to what will be Item Six, which is...
John? We do have Toby here for the volunteer board.
Yep, I'm moving on to that right now. Toby Scott with us regarding the Whitefish Lake and Lake Shore Protection Committee on a draft letter to the county commissioners regarding shoreline development. Toby, welcome.
Toby Scott, Barclay Lane, Whitefish. Yeah, I'm on the Lake Shore Protection Committee as the representative from the planning board, planning commission as it is now. And in addition to our oversight of the lake shore protection area, which is from high water up 20 feet, and then there's an additional 20-foot zone beyond that, we try and keep track of everything that's going on on the lake that isn't within our jurisdiction, which happens to be outside of the city limits. You guys might recollect, quite some time ago, there was an explosion on the west shore of the lake, and rocks went down and they got into the lake. At the Lake Shore Protection Committee meeting that following week, we had probably close to a dozen people from the neighborhood and elsewhere around the city that came in and complained about it. I told them, go to the city, you know, we don't really have jurisdiction out there. And then I believe that following week, I came forward and spoke in the public comment period about maybe trying to establish something with the county to some agreement with them. And Mr. Mayor, you outspokenly said, well, I don't normally say anything, but we just met with the county before, and they said they couldn't care less about it.
We sure did.
Nevertheless, we've continued on, and even though on a couple of occasions this year, we haven't had any applications, I still ask the members of the protection committee to meet. And during the course of those meetings, we have come up with two draft letters, which I think you have before you, regarding two of the, well, under Whitefish rules, violations of the Lake Shore Protection Committee or our Lake Shore Protection Rules. And we'd like to bring it to the attention of the county and are seeking direction from the City Council as to whether this should come from the Whitefish City Council or from the Lake Shore Protection Committee. Now, I am probably another member of the committee, I'm more than happy to go down and meet with somebody from the commissioner's office in Kalispell for the county of Flathead, but it's up to you. And if you look over the letters, if you agree with everything and how they're stated and text and all things like that, we're looking for direction. How do we make the first step to approach the county and say, hey, look, there are some things going on here that aren't good for Whitefish Lake, and they're not good for the view from the lake. We take occasional boat tours around looking at the lake, and we'd like to be able to have jurisdiction over the entire lake. And actually, as a part of that, we proposed a bill through our Senator Dave Fern that would have given us jurisdiction over the entire lake, but it didn't make it out of committee. So we're going to try again and reword it so that perhaps the next legislative session will reconsider it and give us the opportunity to take care of the entire Whitefish Lake Shore, county and city. If you've got any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thanks, Toby. We'll bring this up at the end of our meeting under Item 10, communications from the council.
Okay.
Appreciate your time. Any volunteer board reports with the council? Not seeing any. You do have the consent agenda along with the November 1 retreat meeting minutes, as well as the November 17 meeting minutes.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
There are seconds. Seconded by Counselor Quinell. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign. That motion does carry unanimously. Move on to Item Eight. We have no public hearings scheduled for this evening, so we'll move on to Item Nine, communications from our city manager. You have Dana's report enclosed with the packet. Any questions for Dana, our city manager? Dana, anything additional to report on?
The only thing that I want to update you on is that I will be gone Wednesday of this week through Tuesday of next week. I'm going to Vegas to marry my best friend, and I am beyond excited. So I might come back with a different last name, but, you know, I'll be the same person that you have here today. So just a little bit happier, so, or a lot, actually. But other than that, I have nothing else.
We'll know how to find you.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Dana. Have a great weekend. We'll miss you at the Christmas party. We'll move on to Item 10, communications from the mayor and city councilors. Before I read the Arbor Day proclamation, there's a letter from Lucas Faust regarding the Glacier Twins lease. Any comments on that letter? Steve?
I would just like to ask Frank and maybe Andy to, I know, I think maybe you talked about it at our last meeting, but this kind of, this letter sounds counter to what you guys reported last time, and I just, I don't know if you have any comments on it or not.
I guess the nicest thing I can say, it is certainly inconsistent with the facts that we're aware of.
I would concur with that assessment.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to, I don't know what the whole, I don't know what the situation is. You guys were on the inside, and I just wanted to see if you, if any of this made any sense to you, and it sounds like you have, that it's inconsistent. So, thank you.
Thanks for clarification. Frank, with that said, I'm going to go ahead, it's that time of year, to read our annual Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas natural areas, trees, and landscapes provide not only community beautification, but also economic and environmental benefits, and whereas trees provide many benefits to the community, including air purification, windbreaks, noise reduction, shade and energy savings, and whereas planting trees and maintaining older trees provides an opportunity for community interaction, volunteerism, economic development, and environmental conservation, and whereas our efforts to improve the environment benefit present as well as future generations, and whereas Arbor Day in Montana is officially the last Friday in April, we're doing it a little beforehand. So therefore, I, John Melfeld, Mayor of Whitefish, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 24, 2026, as Arbor Day, and I encourage citizens to participate in appropriate activities and to take advantage of the benefits of the parks and other natural areas in our community. Thanks very much for listening tonight. With that said, we'll move on to counselor comments. Giuseppe, would you like to start tonight?
Sure, thank you. Just a comment to reiterate congratulations to, for the hard work toward you guys, Habitat for Humanity, do. About the volunteers, a few years ago with my company, then called Maxion, now PayRock, which almost every year comes and helps, we went in and the managers, who know better, started framing this bathroom. I loved my gun, nail gun, and I went, putum, putum, framed this old bathroom, and whoever the coordinator was, came and goes, that's nice, but the tub is outside. We left the tub outside, so we had to unframe it, move the tub in. So be careful with volunteers.
Thanks, Giuseppe. Steve?
Yeah, thanks again, Habitat. I hope that we can somehow find a way to work together in the future. I did, actually, when I first moved here, I worked, I volunteered on those, the Habitat houses on Texas. So I am aware of the work you do and certainly appreciate it. Second, I just want to hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving. It's a nice time to spend with family and just kind of take some time to be thankful for all the wonderful things we have here, which reminds me that, yes, the mountain opens on Thursday, right? And that's exciting. It means winter is here, the official open of winter. Thank you, Jamie, for bringing up how we should find other ways to celebrate winter other than skiing and those kind of things. And then finally, congrats, Dana. We'll miss you, but I hope you have a lot of fun down there in Vegas.
Thanks, Steve. Frank?
Nothing of substance to add.
Thank you, Counselor. Ben?
Yes, I do just want to thank you folks from Habitat for coming in this evening. I really appreciate that the business model, so to speak, of Habitat seems to be evolving over the years and working with the land trusts and everything. I think that is... is a very compelling option for the production of, of some much-needed housing. So, I really appreciate the fact that you're here. And I also echo, I hope we can find some ways to work together more in the future. Because I know that there are a lot of people in this community who would be delighted to have one of your homes. So, perhaps we can figure that one of these days. Do you wish for any feedback on Toby's request, or do you wanna handle that?
Go ahead. I was gonna bring that up, but you're more than welcome to.
Sure. I was just gonna say, in my limited opinion, I mean, we delegate responsibilities to the Lake Shore Committee. I think the, the form and content of the letter that was presented seems reasonable to me. And I personally have no issues if that is issued as written.
I, I actually, I do agree, but I think the letters, Toby, with all due respect, should be combined. Because I think the second letter provides a lot of visual evidence as to what our concerns are. And if you don't mind, I'd like to circle back with our planning staff and city manager to, to best navigate how we submit this and convey this more effectively than we have in the past to the county commissioners. And we'll circle back with the Lake Shore Committee.
Well, I'll circle back to you.
I know you will, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, because a lot of the text and phrasing was identical in both letters.
Correct.
And they're just addressing ones on the west side, ones on the east side, slightly different issues. But, yeah, that's, that's great, because the planning staff does collaborate. Lauren, our direct liaison, I guess, between the Lake Shore Protection Committee, she does a great job. And she also works with Dave Taylor, who always puts his input into it to craft the letters and say how we should do it. So, I think combining it would be just fine.
Okay.
And when we get that final draft, I'm ready to make an appointment, go down and see what we can do.
I'll join you again. See how far we get. But thanks very much for the effort. Rebecca? Or Ben, anything further?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Just congratulations, Dana. And it looked like we're not having a second meeting in December. So, I just wanted to wish everybody happy holidays and stay safe out there.
We do have appointments...
Yep, Rebecca, just on that note...
...at the December 15th meeting.
We will have a work session, a special session to hold interviews and appoint those committees and boards. But we will not have a regular meeting.
Thanks, Rebecca. Andy?
Dana and Michael, congratulations. Have fun. Wish we could all be there, but I know you don't want a large crowd, so that's good.
You don't want us there?
Somebody has to stay back here and mind the store. Yeah, thanks, Toby, for the, the letters. And I think the mayor's comments of getting, circling back with staff and getting everything correct on that. And I think they should come from both the council and the Lake Shore Protection Committee, yes.
Absolutely.
Both of us, yeah. I think that carries a little bit more weight. It's obviously been a problem dealing with the county and Lake Shore violations, which we know are out there all the time. Kind of makes me think of another thing is, you know, we have a dark skies ordinance in this community. But what we're starting to see is a lot of really large homes with really large glass and lots of light coming out of that glass. I'll name a specific project in Cantera on Wisconsin Avenue, the giant lights shining out that, in my opinion, does not, yeah, it's inside, but it doesn't really meet the spirit of our dark skies ordinance. So, maybe something to put on the Planning Commission's agenda?
Yeah, we'll need to amend our ordinance, because our ordinance only addresses exterior lighting. We did contact them and asked them if they could turn it down. And I don't think they ever did, but...
Yeah, yeah. Because it's, yeah, it's interior lighting, but it has a large exterior effect. So, in other than that, yeah, if we don't have a regular meeting on the second meeting for December, happy holidays to all and be safe. And drive safely, please, people. That's the most important thing right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. I have nothing other than just to remind folks that we are partnering with the North Valley Food Bank for food donations. You can drop off non-perishable items here at City Hall from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. or during public meetings. And you can also donate money or volunteer by visiting the North Valley Food Bank's website. On that note, happy holidays, everyone. Thanks, everyone, for coming tonight. And we are adjourned.